Let's see. Okay, I'm unmuted. Hi, guys.
Hey, how's it going?
Good. How are you?
Oh, you know, surviving, I guess.
Yep, yep. Oh, gosh. All right.
We're hoping this will be short and sweet.
Should be. And we've got the, um, brain is gone. Other meeting at three, yeah?
Four, yeah.
At four, yes, it's 3 o'clock now, thank you. Clearly, I need more coffee. I'm gonna grab some before we start. Hi, Terry.
Hi, Katie, how are you?
I'm very well, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Terry.
Hello, where Ross is on. Hi, Nikki, hi Nicole.
This was power for.
Well, just like, like we're the minority whips, right, doing the business. Is it gonna, nobody else is gonna come in, right? It's scheduled, okay, and there's no questions that have been submitted?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Gosh, it's feeling lonely again then on the budget committee. I should do the, you know, check off the boxes and we'll do a quick roll call. We'll convene the meeting here exactly 3 o'clock on the 2nd of June. A quick roll call, trustee Clark.
I am here.
And trustee Andrews is here, so with that, there's no questions for the record. And I think we can launch right in, Nicole, to your report for how things have changed in the budget.
Okay, sounds good. And so after our meeting on May 12th to kind of go over our initial numbers and tenure projections, we did make the following changes. Definitely, we added two consultants other to hire a political consulting firm, full advisors to facilitate the community facilities district measure. And a $1,200 addition was made to the PERS unfunded account based on updated figures that Ian told from CalPERS website. And we did receive a couple of invoices in the interim period. So workers' comp was increased by $15,750, according to the invoice from SDRMA. And earthquake insurance was also increased by $2,700 based on the quote we got from our broker. And that the earthquake insurance policy will be presented in the board package for the June meeting. And then to, to kind of offset those additions, we did decide that we would reduce some of the expenditures in capital. And we had originally budgeted for a DVD lending library that cost $52,000. And so Christopher has graciously agreed to seek grant funding to try to still make that happen so that it's not coming out of the library's budget. And I do have a note that there is an estimated additional cost of $75,000 to our salaries and wages budget in order to implement the recommended changes that Coffin Associates made based on the classification and compensation study. We do have some vacancies right now, so it doesn't reflect an actual increase to that line item. But the salaried and hourly lines will need to be adjusted as most of the recommendations involve moving staff to exempt salary status. So you will see a shift in those figures. And my plan for the June meeting is to kind of present two budget documents, one that includes those recommended changes should we decide to approve the class and comp study and one that doesn't include those, just if for any reason.
Okay.
And so that leaves us, here, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, thanks for doing the deep dive on the salary because that's gonna be a big item. So the more we know about it as it's heading our way, the better, the better route will be. So thanks for factoring that in carefully.
I've got a quick question here, and I am going through and realizing that I'm not immediately finding it. So the proposed budget that we looked at at the board meeting in May had a proposed drawdown of $233,000 from reserves. And this one, that number has dropped to 199.5. I see that there's a shift in the compensation area, like it looks like that's, I mean, that number has decreased, right? Or no, excuse me, I'm making sure I'm looking at the right one. So it was 2.648, and now we're at 2.664. But where is the rest of the, where is the money that we're not pulling from reserves coming from? Like, where's that offset?
So the 52,000 that we pulled out of capital is enough to cover that $18,000 difference that we were experiencing, and then the difference is not pulling out of reserves.
Got it, okay, well, I, cuz I was, I, when I read the staff report, I thought, oh, my God, we're gonna be, you know, pulling even more cash out. And then I was very pleased to see that that was not the case.
Well, I mean, it goes beyond, like, we, we do think there's gonna be opportunity for grants, especially with like remote access to things as time moves forward with COVID and everything else.
Yeah.
But Christopher and I also had a discussion about, do we really wanna purchase a DVD lending machine? Being that it's becoming somewhat of an obsolete format. So we're gonna explore options of like, if DVDs do go away, we want a lending machine that'll be more versatile anyhow. So we're, we're not super confident what we wanna purchase at this point. And again, once we do identify what that is, we're hoping that we can find grant funding to help cover at least some of it.
It makes sense. I also have to wonder if just there are like, I don't know, ways to get like old used ones, right? Like, you used to have red boxes in every grocery store, and now it's like way less of a thing. So I wouldn't be surprised if there were some aftermarket options that we could get for cheaper, especially if we're saying like, we wanna meet the demand for DVDs, but we don't wanna invest a ton of cash in something that's gonna be, as you said, like out of date in five or 10 years.
Well, and when I was at Public Library Association Conference in February in Nashville, there, there are different options. Like, I saw one that was like, basically you scan your card, you open this big door. And because we have RFID tagging, you pull out what you want. It could be books, DVDs, whatever you have. And then when you close the door, it can calculate like what you took out.
Oh, I've seen those in airports, they're very cool.
Yeah, so, you know, again, like exploring other options. I don't know that I want us to be nailed down to a 750-item DVD machine, is what I'm saying.
Right, I think having something where we have the capacity to put different stuff in there is really smart. I think that makes a ton of sense.
I'm sure you can get the airport machines really cheaply now, too, since there's nobody.
That's true.
All those best, all those best buy ones, we can go and scoop those up.
That's right.
We'll take that off the hand of some airport.
That's right.
Yeah, I noticed that line that you decreased sharply, and that is furniture and things like that. But are you okay with that? That's a big decrease in that line item. Are you gonna be, you're gonna be set for what you need for the coming year?
That was just for the DVD lending machine, that 52,000.
Okay, that was the whole, the whole thing then, right? Okay. Cuz I saw it, I went, wow, you know, I, I mean, I get what you're saying with the one machine, but I thought that there might be more to it, so thanks.
Oh, I get it now. I misread, was decreased by 52,000. That was decreased from 52 to 50. Okay, that makes a lot more sense, sorry. Is there any rationale, and I guess this maybe is more a conversation for the board meeting, but is there any rationale for not adopting the results of the class and comp study? Like, is there any fiscal argument for not doing it?
Um.
Beyond the fact that it costs more money, but like.
I mean, I personally feel that, it would have, it would make the school study null and void, you know?
Right, like, why did we spend the money if we weren't gonna do it?
And I really believe that, like, when you look at, like, are the three larger, like, the three positions that are getting paid the lowest undermarket value, if we were to ever have to replace them, it would be a very difficult time recruiting.
Yep.
Definitely think, especially because we do have a couple vacancies right now that are gonna kind of cover the difference and integrate that into the budget now. It makes a lot of sense. I think the only financial argument would be if we absolutely couldn't afford it. And I don't know that that's the case right now, I mean, down the road.
Correct.
You know, but.
Yeah, but we can't afford anything down the road, you know what I mean? Like, not, not doing this is not gonna be the thing that makes the difference to whether or not we can pay our bills in 10 years.
Yeah. And I think considering that we're putting pretty much, like, all classifications in the correct salary range of system-wide is, is amazing for basically $100,000.
I think it's incredible. I was expecting way bigger hit than that. Does that, and again, I'm apologizing for not recalling, does that, that involves a step up to our, to our $15 minimum wage?
Yeah.
Okay, but it doesn't involve that, whatever, the way it rippled out.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there was enough of a, cuz we asked that question in our last meeting with Coffin Associates. There was enough of a difference between library aide or page, as it's called right now, and clerk, that it didn't have that domino effect.
Great.
Yeah.
Great, I'm thrilled that we'll be consistent with our $15 minimum wage level as well, that's outstanding.
I mean, I really do think we're accomplishing all of our goals.
It seems like it.
The comp study.
It really does.
Kudos again to Coff, they were great to work with, very responsive.
Yeah.
They're going to be at the board meeting on June 22nd, so if you.
Oh, cool.
Questions for them, we'll present all of the, the reports and the findings and all of the job descriptions and everything to the board.
That's cool, that's cool. Yeah, that's outstanding. And I mean, again, I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled that we'll be able to get everybody in the right classification with, like, a market competition level salary or compensation level for $100,000. Like, that's awesome, that's really awesome.
As I recall though, Nikki, you, you said that, as I recall, you said that there was also a phase-in component to this as well, right? It would happen over time.
So when.
Am I right about that?
Right, so when we first looked at it, we thought, okay, like, if you did the percentage, like, for example, marketing and community engagement is 26% below average. So like, when we added the percentages, we thought we'd only be able to do half at a time. But when we met with Coff, what they showed us was, no, we're, these are the recommended salary ranges. So for example, if that, if a manager was being underpaid by, let's say, $500 a month, to get them into step one of the appropriate range, that wasn't as big of a hit as we were thinking it would be. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We were thinking it was gonna be 150, 160,000 to be able to do everyone, but that's not the case. You just try to, you know, get, you identify the right salary range and pay them at that step one level, which is an increase for every person that was being paid below class.
Have you, have you done this sort of, in a sequestered way from the staff? I know the staff association was real interested in what it might be and so on. To what extent has this sort of been discussed among the employees?
So I was, I was just gonna share that we had our all-staff meeting on Friday, and we shared all of the results with all of the staff. So I'm gonna be sending out the complete reports. Actually, Nicole and I were looking at them today. But I shared where all of the classifications fell in terms of percentage based on the median and what the final classifications were. So they, we showed them all of the data and gave them an opportunity to look. Well, women shared all, I should say. We, you know, highlighted which classifications were the most based on percentages, and we're gonna send the reports out. And so far, I had one person respond thanking us for sharing all the information, asking when we would get the reports out to them. So overall, I think it was, it was well-received. You know, I think the thing that we have going for us is that the numbers don't lie. You know, we just really want to be paying people on par with similar positions in surrounding library systems.
So if this was a.
Good feedback.
If this was a union negotiation, then you would call this a, so far, a successful step in the right direction with the entire staff. And has the expectation also been set that if you're not going to fill a position or two, as you talked about, that there seemed to be a willingness on the staff now to pick it up a little bit if they need to, because their compensation will be adjusted? You see what I'm saying? Are they, are they in it for, for the long haul, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I mean.
In other words, they'd be doing more work presumably, right? If, if you don't have a couple of positions filled, and little things like that can amount to money as well, basically. And their attitude about this so far is not okay?
Um, I think it's, it's hard to gauge that question because we're in such a weird time right now. What I can say is, since we brought everybody back on May 18th, we really haven't experienced much pushback from the staff. I mean, like, when we integrated curbside, it like was a completely different service that everybody's had to, like, create and learn new. And overall, I think everybody's risen to the challenge personally. Do I, I don't think, being that we're open to, not open to the public right now, we can really gauge what work is gonna look like if we're down positions yet. But, you know, like, we did do one evaluation with a staff person today and did say, like, how much we appreciate them stepping up to help and filling in gaps where they're needed, because as we move forward, that's gonna be the case. And she just said, yeah, of course, it's my job, you know? So I think part of it is, you know, the staff culture we're trying to create of like, moving forward, everybody's gonna have to pitch in. And getting them to see that, like, we're a pretty healthy staffed library system for two branches. So, you know.
And we're not laying anybody off.
Let's not work harder, let's work smarter.
Yeah.
And I think curbside has given us an ability to really look at our process and what makes the most sense. And especially now that we're taking returns back and we're not checking them in for three days. You know, it's like, really looking at how we do things and if it really makes sense or not.
What's the feeling from staff on, cuz this budget doesn't include that 2% COLA that we've, you know, done in years past, right? So what's the, what's the feeling on that? Is everybody like, do they get that? Are they hip to that? Is that a discussion that's happened?
Yeah, I mentioned it at the all-staff meeting, and I haven't heard anything from staff.
Okay.
I think they were somewhat expecting it.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've talked about it a lot, it's not like it's a surprise. I just wanted to make sure that was, everybody was clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did mention the sixth step.
Oh, and, and part of the draft, you, or the report that you're gonna be getting.
Yeah.
In the board package, we currently go from step one to step 5.5. We're bumping it up to a step six.
Okay.
Five was a 2.5% raise, whereas all the other steps had a 5% difference.
Right.
We're eliminating 5.5 and creating a six. So at least the people that are topped out have the ability to get.
That's nice.
Additional 2.5. But we did put in the, the report, as well as let staff know on Friday, that, that's gonna be a merit-based step.
Oh, that's cool.
It's necessarily something that everybody will automatically get, but can strive towards.
That's very cool. Wait, so, but do you have to, do you have to get all the way to five? It's not like it's a merit-based one that can happen at any point, right? Like, it's only, once you're at five, then you just hang out there. Okay.
Yeah, so I haven't received any negative feedback thus far.
If I remember from, like, conversations about the step system way back in the day, like, way back in the day, there was some deliberation about the length of time and the way that that works from like, step one, step two, step three, and that it's like six months and then a year, and that, and that it was, it felt like it was applied somewhat inconsistently. Have we addressed that, or are we leaving it alone?
It's still the same process, so.
Okay.
When you are hired, you receive your first evaluation at six months, and that's when you would get the step increase, as long as you were eligible for it. So that's when you would move from one to two. Month date becomes your new anniversary date. So any subsequent evaluations happen on that date, and that's when your step increases occur. And, and that's, that's always been the policy, and that's, that's always how it's been. Maybe the inconsistencies were between, you know, if it was merit-based or if it was just kind of an automatic increase.
I think also there was some concern that maybe those evaluations weren't happening at six months. And so there was like, and that, I, right, if I'm remembering correctly, this is a while ago now, but. So I guess, uh, two questions on that front. One, is that consistent with what other systems do? Okay, cool. And two is, does it, does it make any impact on our budget if we were to change that six-month period? Do you know what I mean? Like, if it took a year, or if it took a different amount of time, would it materially impact the budget in any meaningful way?
Just a little bit. We do account for all these step increases throughout the year.
Right.
All in the first half or the second half, so we definitely build that into the budget, any anticipated increases. The only issue would be if it were when you hire, obviously, you know, we could kind of budget for the open position, assuming that someone would get a step increase at six months, but.
Right.
Keep a pretty good eye on it when we're budgeting for salaries.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm asking because I'm thinking about our next year, two years, who knows? And how weird operations are. And like, one of the things we've, I mean, what you were just saying, Nikki, that it's a little bit hard sometimes to gauge performance when we may not be open to the public. And, and who knows how long that will continue, right? So I guess, I'm, I guess it's more a question of like, for staff that are hired going forward, do you feel like that system is still gonna serve us well, even in the scenario that we're in, if this continues for another year or two?
I think so. Everything we've been told from various attorneys and other sources says to keep treating it like it's business as usual.
Okay.
We're, we're doing the evaluation process, obviously, it looks a little bit different based on the work that everybody is doing, but.
Right, right.
The advice has been not to put evaluations on hold for this period.
No, of course not. Okay, great, perfect. Well, that answers my question, thank you, that's very helpful.
Because we integrated a three- and six-month evaluation tool, that's gonna help guide that as well.
Right.
One, one of the things, and, and I say that because it's, it's somewhat forcing supervisors to be tracking the performance.
Yeah.
Don't feel like someone should graduate from the introductory period, either A, have the option of not retaining them, or B, extending it, in which case that, that raise or whatever wouldn't take place until that point.
That's perfect, no.
Keep an eye on all of that.
Yeah, right, and I think, I, I think that that's, that's so smart, because, like I said, my memory from before was that the issue was not with the step system, but with the timing and consistency of evaluation. So I think having that process fixed is gonna resolve so many problems.
Yeah, I would assume that's.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, cuz there weren't evaluations done for three or four or five years or something.
That's rough. Yeah, 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 okay.
Thanks for that. I mean, I could tell there's an uptick in your, your work on that, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
I had a comment, if, if we're done with this subject, and, and we are to my satisfaction, we had a comment about our workers' comp insurance, because we had the big spike in that. You there? I'm getting a little hesitant.
You're freezing a little. Okay, I think you're okay now, Terry, no?
Uh-oh, looks like you froze.
I can see you, but, but nobody's moving.
Okay, you're unfrozen now.
Were we all?
Was that me, or who that was? My, my comment was on, uh, workers' comp insurance, and as soon as I said that, everybody froze in place. I go, did I say something wrong? But the, the comment I had was that, I did, I did call them Debbie Yakota, do you know her? Uh-oh. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's weird, I'm not, it's really a delay on my end.
Oh.
But anyway, because I wanted to know a little bit more about the point system, the discount system that we have there. And, you know, I noticed that on the board, on the governance section of it, there were points that we could have gotten, and, and Katie, we should probably announce this at the board meeting next time, where we would have gotten a further discount on our bill if we'd done a few more activities. So I think there were 18 points, something like that, each one worth a percentage discount on the bill, which is a lot now. And we were able to cash in, I don't know, about half of that, I wanna say. So there are opportunities for board members to do a little bit more in terms of their extracurricular learning. And you get credits for this that transfer, translate into points for the, for the bill. And it happens all across the spectrum. If you look at the SDMR, SDRMA bill, they have a little deal on that. And Debbie, who's the claims administrator, really nice lady, said, yeah, you could, we should be taking better advantage of that. And also, I asked her about that 228, 228% increase in the premium that we got, or that one section. And I think, you know, where I'm talking about, Nicole, you probably saw that. She said that's really high, and that she expects that, she expects that that will come down if we can have, you know, a clean record going into the next cycle. One thing she said that was of interest, and you probably know this, I don't know, but they do have consultants that they'll send out, I think, sort of for free. And they'll take a look at your workplace, and they'll try to give you a little bit more information about what you might have some trip and fall hazards. But I would say this is a really critical year budget-wise, to make sure that we don't have any, any workers' comp events, because that will really slam, if we have three in a row, that will really slam our rates for next year.
We do, we do have SDRMA come out every year to do an assessment.
Okay, yeah, I thought you probably did, but I just wanted to make sure I mentioned it.
We should get a list of all those things that, that we can, we can do, cuz I will, I will learn and do webinars and do stuff all day long if it brings our. We don't do it anyway, but, you know.
You would probably make up the difference yourself, Katie, knowing.
You know what, I'm an overachiever. I did, I was always the one with the tote bag for summer reading, so. That's my, that's my summer reading assignment.
There you go.
But no, that'd be great to know, because you know what, honestly, it kind of, I think I knew that at some point in the past, and it fell off my radar completely. So I really, I appreciate that reminder, and be good.
Okay, yeah, it's worth mentioning, I mean, I think all of us.
Good to mention, good to mention, and, you know, we'll have a new board member coming on, so I'm gonna be thinking about like our onboarding process anyway. And since we, you know, have access to all of that, all of that training, we should be taking advantage of it. And I think in the same way that, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but in the same way that we've been asking staff to do like, you know, some continuing ad stuff, I think as a board, it might be a nice idea to ask everybody to commit to, you know, every three months, every six months, or whatever it is, to do at least one training and, you know, report back, and that could be an online thing, it could be a conference, it could be whatever. But I think that would be good. I don't know that we need to do it as like a formal policy, but I think if we just sort of agreed.
Well, if we took our, if we took our four potential discount points, and we made them nine points, it's just in that category, I think we can get up to nine, something like that.
Yeah.
That would be worth it right there.
Well, right, right, and it's good for everybody to do anyway, like, apart from the discount, which I love a, I love a, I love a sale.
You know, and you spoke of something, and I think it's appropriate to ask, ask this question at this meeting, and that is the appointments and so on, are we getting a response on that for our people coming in on the website and just generally, or is that looking bleak?
Uh, we, we've had one person apply so far.
Okay. Because I know, I've seen a couple of your talks, Nikki, you're doing a good job, by the way, and you've got that front and center for people to know about. So thanks for doing that.
Of course.
And I think we still have ten days.
Yeah.
Right, it closes on the twelfth. Um, I'm gonna do like a little op-ed or something and try to get that pushed out in the next day or two cause I'm hoping we can get, get some more response, but you know, it's, it's a tough media environment to break through people's.
Yeah.
Attention on, it's, it's brutal right now.
It sure is.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and then it just seems like it's, the last few days have been really bad.
Exhausting, yeah. So I, I can understand why we're not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Chloe after we get off this call to see if we can have it like the first page of the website to, for the next ten days, you know?
That'd be cool.
Push it on social media too.
Yeah, that'd be very cool. I think it'd be helpful. Um, so on, on the budget front, those, we covered all my questions. I don't know, Terry, if you've got other stuff you wanna add.
Uh, no, I mean, I, I'm, I appreciate the fact that you, we're not drawing down as much as we thought we would. I think that feature um, that you have on this report and ones going back a little bit, Nicole, is great. And that is what our cash kind of position is and, you know, we drew down, this is what we've got left, et cetera. One of the things I'd appreciate on the, in the board packet and would help all of us would be, if you could say we've got X number of dollars in our reserve account and it represents, you know, seven months of expenses or whatever, because the floor is six months. And just have like a little assurance on there that we haven't drawn down. I know that Gwen was a little confused, I believe, at the last meeting about if we drawn on overboard, et cetera, and that'll help all of us on, as we were looking at the packet to know that we're safe on that one.
That's a great idea. Yeah, that's a great idea. And it would also be a helpful reminder, cause I know that six-month target fluctuates, right, based on what our budget is, so.
Right.
I always have kind of a, like a guess in my head, but I don't know how accurate that is. So it'd be helpful to have it explicit.
You know, I'm hopeful that um, you know, we probably underestimated what our tax revenue will be next year.
Yeah.
And uh, it was, you know, it's barely gone up at all. And if it went up another one percent, that's twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. So I'm, I'm hopeful that'll happen. If you look at back with the last one, that chart that I did, a lot of the impact didn't happen really until the next year. And that's when people just flat out couldn't afford to do their property tax bill. But I think of that, a lot of that had already been harvested by the time this whole thing began.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't have any more questions. I think you did a great job and.
Yeah, it's terrific. Do we need a formal motion or anything? Are we good?
Um, yeah, let's, let's uh, one thing I'd like to do before we do the motion though would be in terms of a report uh, back to the board, I, I'm of the opinion that we could use the one that with some minor changes, and because we really haven't changed anything substantially in the budget, would be just something. You, you want me to rewrite basically what you've done, Nicole, for the board packet so that uh, has a different kind of narrative style to it? Or did we just put that in as a report from the budget committee? How, what would people feel comfortable with?
Um, I don't mind if you want to um, write something from the budget committee. I'll include an updated staff report, so it'll look a little bit different than this.
Okay, great. And maybe that could serve as sort of modified minutes for the meeting too. So when I'm done here, I'll sit down and write it and get it out to everybody. If you have changes, just let me know. All right, yeah, now I would take a motion, I guess, since there's only two of us.
I will, yeah, I'll move that we uh, accept this proposed budget and bring it to the full board at our next regular meeting for a vote.
I would move, I would so move uh, with the, with the addendum that we've also approved a, a little modification to the budget report every month. And that would be a, a running total of what our reserves are, but how much they would cover us if, in the, in the case of an emergency. And so I would certainly second that and um, I vote aye.
I also do. Thank God that worked out.
No kidding. I was nervous on that one.
Yeah, the real nail biter. No, that's great. This is very helpful. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm thrilled also that we're able to, that we were able to get the class and comp study done and like on time. I mean, that's, that's really exciting. And I think you guys especially are to be commended, cause I know it took so much time. And I'm just, I'm thrilled that we were able to get it done mid-pandemic.
Yeah.
The other thing, Nikki, I'll throw that in here. Sorry, you've already been thanked for it, but just thanks for getting those evaluations rolling because that's a baseline for all this stuff. And then my, you know, I can echo what you said, Katie, with the idea that we told the staff that we would do this, the board did, right, the administration did, and we got it done, you know, almost done. So I'm really proud of that. You did a great job with that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And you, kudos to the board and the staff for choosing Coff, cause they were great.
Yeah.
Highly recommend them to anyone that asks.
Yeah, I think that all of our consultants have done really good jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Those make the office much better, let me tell you.
Ready to adjourn then, Katie?
Ready, yeah.
Okay, you gonna give a motion?
Nah, yeah, I'll make a motion. I move.
Okay, and I second it and we both vote aye, I'm sure. So we'll adjourn the meeting at three thirty-two. I'll write up some minutes and get those to everybody and let me know if you want changes, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you so much.
Bye-bye.